I read through them, we can. We can go through, I guess the um. Well, first of all, let's, let's keep going with the, the actual layout of the location and stuff. Do you guys have any questions about the current site plan as it sits in front of you? Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I do have one question. So I see on the utilities, the utility plan, that there is the um. Waste drain, sanitary drain going down to uh the PUD below. Has that been approved vetted with that condo development?
Uh, well, that's public sanitary, sorry. The, the, the main was stubbed uh between eighteen and nineteen. There, it's stubbed up to our property line within easement. It's a public, it's a public utility, so. Uh, and if you remember in the rezoning, and maybe you weren't here, I'm not sure who saw here, but there was a condition of the rezoning that uh the township.
Had meets.
Determined that the capacity was there.
Okay.
Uh, and that has been determined that there is capacity for, for these um twenty-three units in the downstream system, so. Yes, that's all, that's all queued up um to use for the site.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at the, this is more of an Ed question, um just looking at the topography and stuff like this, with these areas that are deemed wetland. Is there Bear Creek watershed setbacks?
No, this area is not within the, the Bear Creek watershed overlay, it's district. And real quick, before I forget, this was noticed as a public hearing, I realized in the confusion and everything, it technically didn't need one, but there was one notice, so you do, we'll have to open and close it.
No problem. Any other questions for him on the site map before we get into the other reviews? Go ahead.
Two comments on it. Uh, one is where the uh. Well, let's call it the pathway or the walkway joins the park.
Hmm.
Uh, I just wanna make sure that, cause that's a lot of wetlands, that you work very carefully with the county parks. That we don't end up just dead ending into a wetland.
Hmm.
You know, somehow you're gonna, that's a real mess over there. So, might have to move, might not, bridging, whatever, but be careful there. The other concern or thought I got. And it's not mandatory on the zoning, but there's no sidewalk here. And two thousand feet of road from out by Young. That's a fairly long distance without to have a sidewalk if you're gonna walk down that road. And then go into the park or something, so I think you might wanna consider a sidewalk possibly on one side of the, the other of that road.
Yeah, 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 obviously, we're not proposing any, uh, the roadway is twenty-six feet wide, so it's relatively wide. Uh, so the, the intent is that if, if someone is walking in there. And, yeah, to bring them out to Young, there's nothing there to bring them to, so that's a bit of an issue, but um, okay, take that under advisement, thank you.
Any else? We'll get into the, um, everybody had a chance to review the attorney. This is, this is. And I'll let Ben, if you don't mind, I'm gonna let you speak to this, um, because I know you know a little bit more about this, um. The comments from the attorney, uh, were pretty straightforward with, uh, we need to address the remaining parcel. Because this is a site pla- site condominium plan, we cannot amend the ordinance or give them any reprobation from it, they have to meet all the requirements. And within the plan they do, it's just what they would be creating if they get approval with the remaining R R parcel. Other than that. It's pretty straightforward, correct? Um, so I guess we could talk about that a little bit. Um, I know you have a little bit more on that, you wanna speak to it?
Yeah, sure. So I'm, earlier today, I'd asked the, called Ed to see what the other options are with that and um. He talked to uh attorney scales, it sounds like, and I don't, I, maybe I'll let you speak to that and just what the. The conversation that you had on that, but just questioning, I think, as, as you mentioned, our ability instead of having this go to the Z B A. Um, and trying to meet the, the five facts that we, that we do, that we look at. The option, is there an option to deed that parcel as one, um, with the easement of the private role going through it?
There is. I know, Todd, you mentioned it about keeping it as one parcel, so. Uh, Jim Scales and I talked about just having a deed restriction, it remains as one parcel, can never be split through Kent County, it all stays contiguous with one owner. Pretty much what you've mentioned and what would be noted on the site plan, so we, that would be allowed. The, the southern parcel itself, there is issue, so wouldn't be be. Wouldn't be able to be split off on its own parcel anyways, so.
And that would, that would alleviate all the concerns with a hundred and seventy-five feet.
Yeah, that would be.
The other portions of that.
Cause it's gonna remain one contiguous parcel with the easement just going through, and then just, like you said on the plan, put a note and then get a deed on the deed restriction, it must remain under common ownership.
I know Jim's not here, but anybody have any questions about the attorney review? Um, go ahead.
Just, I know they said they weren't doing sidewalks and it's not required, but he put in here sidewalks are optional, but maybe required as specified by the township? How can the township specify? How is that possible to be specified?
Ed.
If you feel justifiable to require sidewalks for development, so it'd be up to the planning commission.
So even for the condo, site condo that, that is a contingency, we are able to. Just, just for the public, I was gonna say, cause I know we have public here, the, the difference between a P U D. And a site condo is much more restrictive as far as what we're able to, um, what we're able to regulate or stipulate and things with that. If, if the rest of the portions meet the requirements for a site condo, is that a, is that a fair explanation, Ed, or is there anything you wanna add?
No, the state, there's the condominium act of the state which governs all site condominiums and we follow what they require. Where P U Ds are more of, it, the state allows townships to do P U Ds, but we have more say on what we can require and not require within a P U D.
We cannot amend. Site condominium approval requirements. Or ordinances where we can with a P U D. Uh, for the. Engineers review, um, it's pretty straightforward. He, he addresses the two different um detention ponds, which, there's nothing wrong with that, it. Everything's good on there. I mean, the only thing that he mentioned was uh the general site layout, conditions one and two. The configuration of lots eleven and thirteen, which I think Jim addressed in his, his memo as well is, it's legal. It, they meet the requirements, everything, it's just done a little bit differently than what we normally see, but it's a hundred percent legal, correct, Ed? And obviously, on number one, the location that's proposed has to be approved by um Kent County Road Commission, so. Um, but. Neither the planner nor the attorney really saw any major concerns with that. Did you guys have any questions about the planner's review? All right, at this time, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. If you have something you wanna say, come on up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Uh, my name's Julie Radford, I live at seven eight two two Silver Hills Drive. Um, in trying to understand all the terminology. Aesthetically, what's the difference for a non-educated person about this stuff, a P U D versus um a condo site? Like aesthetically, what is, am I gonna notice a difference compared to another, like maybe the subdivision that's just south of us, the P U D that's just south of that?
It depends on what type of P U D they, somebody would apply for, but usually there's open space. Um, but with that, usually there's higher density to offset that open space. Um, this one is pretty straightforward, it's, it's higher density than what the R R is, but um it's. In line with what we see with site condominium plans, they meet all the, you know, the R one requirements, which is then, it's, we have higher density, but that's what the future land use map calls it, but. Certain amenities, maybe you might see different, like the sidewalk thing or streetlights, um, there's usually more landscaping requirements in a P U D. Um, but this being a smaller site condominium plan. I, I mean, some of that stuff would be overkill, it's a very natural.
So will the houses all look like a cookie cutter condo house site setup? I mean, they would.
I can't answer that.
To like the, the condos that are just, just south of this area.
Oh, no, they won't be condos. They'll be, they'll be single family homes.
That's what I, I think the, the, the layperson's ability to understand.
They call it a site condominium plan, um, just because it has an association.
Okay.
Is that a good way to explain it, Ed?
So a typical neighborhood that we may be accustomed to in a residential s- subdivision, but not like a condo setup where the condos all look the same.
Correct. No, he's, she was referring to him with the microphone, but yeah. You're fine.
For all our online, yeah, thank you.
Yes, just to clarify, the condo, um, yeah, every, every home will be different, it'll be, they'll be customized to whatever people, you know, want the builder to build, so. I don't even, I don't, I doubt there will be very many specs, but there won't be any home that is the same.
A good example, the homes on Camelback within the old silver, uh, the country club area, those are site, technically site condos, so the single family homes there, those are technically site condos, it's just how they do the subdivision itself. Is the terminology.
Good question.
I, I could maybe help answer this a little bit. I'm Phil Muston from Muston Construction, been talking to Carl for a long time about this development. And um, yeah, the, I, I look at this development as being a higher end home, executive homes. Um, cause I know we've had people that are, that are waiting and would like to build in here. Um, and they're gonna be a, a very custom, beautiful looking home. And, and obviously, it could vary a little bit, you know, so I guess that's a cool thing about a development that I like, that not every third house looked the same. These are gonna, um, I think with different builders in there, you're gonna get a variety of different custom homes, so. I forgot to list my address, six four six nine Angel View Court, Belmont, in Cannon Township as well, so. Um, I'm, we're looking forward to getting this going, we're hoping, so, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, again, I just wanna add an additional comment to something if I could. Um, I have recognized as we're growing in our community, which we live in a great community, so why wouldn't we grow and have wonderful people move in? One of the things I've noticed lately for where we live is we've got a lot of like newer. We've got light coming in, and sometimes I think some of the lights that we put in our community to keep us safe at night and so we can navigate safely. Sometimes the design of those lights don't maybe shine down on the ground as much, they shine way out. And it's amazing how far that light travels. Um, in the subdi- the, the P U D that's up there, the one that's just, you know, the road that's just south of it. Literally, I have lights on in my house at night shining up on my living room walls. That's how bright these lights can be. We have neighbors in the back unfortunately that have some pretty severe floodlights and one of them goes on and off all the time, but you literally think someone was shining a light. A, a floodlight into our house hitting certain walls, so. I get it, I'm gonna have to reevaluate some, some like decorations and curtains and things, but I just wanna plant the seed. To people who are design- designing and developing, that you may not recognize that that light, while it looks good, the way that light throws out into the community. It can be very much a, you know, a, a deterrent for the neighbors that already live there. Um, I think too, like sometimes even the picklebor- pickleball courts. Uh, those lights, I don't know if they're on all the ni- all night long, when I go to work real early in the mornings, I can tell that they've been on and I just think, wow, how. Much light pollution do we have, and are there ways we as a community could continue to balance safety with, um, you know, lighting? That isn't so intrusive. So I just wanted to plant that seed to everybody as we continue to grow in our community.
Julie, those lights in the summertime are supposed to turn off at ten P M.
Oh.
At nine, so if you see them on, there might be a.
What, what time do they go on? Cause I'm usually heading in at five, five thirty in the morning.
I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you.
I know, we do have a light ordinance, so if there is an issue with somewhere or your specific property, if you just email me and let me know, I can. Reach out, but we don't know if there's an issue unless somebody brings it up.
And the beauty of this one is, is there's no proposed streetlights.
Uh, Frida Proctor, seventy-eight sixty Silver Hills Drive, um, Julie's neighbor, the one who's not shining floodlights in her house, um. Um, but I just wanted to reiterate with the lighting, cause our house is actually even closer to the northern edge of this property line and. Um, you know, we understand that people can build kinda what they want, but. I agree that with the light pollution could be a little bit of a challenge, so thinking about some of the neighbors there, um, would be great. The second question I have was, um, for lots five and six and eight and nine with the no grading areas. I was just curious if that's a requirement that is through at the county or through the ordinance, or is that something that. You think is kinda best, and I asked that just because at least for um. Five and six for sure, like that's our property right there, so I just kinda wanted to get an idea of, um, whether that was pro- like a propose that could change in the future or required. Um, and then it, while, and if you could also just kind of explain to me the culvert as well that goes across six and seven. Cause it looks like it goes into the wetland area that is on the backside of our property, so I just kinda wanted to understand. What the impact of that um culvert would be on the wetland that um crosses um our property line with six and seven. Um, and then my last question was, um, and maybe this is kinda for the builder as well. Uh, would all of the houses generally be um at this lined up in the front and more towards the front? Um, is the, I assume the dotted line in the back is like the, you can't build beyond that line. So how long do you anticipate kind of the driveways to be, and where do you think like the back edge of the houses um would be built, um, out of curiosity? Um, and that is my, all my questions, thank you.
So that dotted line would be the building envelope, they have to be a certain setback off of that, uh, but, yeah.
Correct. So first, uh, regarding the two drainage, I call them infiltration areas. So we're, we're trying hard not to mass grade the site, leave the contours as they are. Both of those areas are naturally low. And, and there won't be a lot of drainage that comes to them. Um, but, uh, so, yeah, we would put that within an easement, um, they couldn't build in there. It would, it would remain natural, and any, any runoff, you really only get runoff from the back of the house that would go to that area, it was still infiltrating to the ground. The culvert is just in case it gets, you know, you get a hundred year, whatever you wanna call it, you get a large event. That that fills up, that it then, it then could, could uh discharge into the natural wetland area, which ultimately is where all that drainage goes now. So the same, same for eight and nine and in five and six, uh, they, they, they will remain natural, they can't build in that area. Now, where will the homes be set? Yeah, the, there's a dash line around uh the property, those are the minimum setbacks. Uh, we would anticipate that the homes generally are toward the street, but I think. Uh, in my mind, a nice part about this, I mean, they, they may vary in setback depending on topography. Uh, because we're not, we're not, except for, except for twenty-three through eighteen, those are being, I would say, mass graded. And all those will be set up closer to the road. Uh, but when you get to one through three, they could, you know, they could be near the road, they could vary back a little bit. Uh, the, there's no one that's gonna build, you know, all the way to the north. Uh, but, uh, cause there's a, there's kind of a hill, I, you can kinda see the hill, the top of the hills, maybe like on five is midway between. That drainage area we talked about in the street, the house will probably sit up on that knob and won't go back much further, uh, be a natural walkout in that case.
So it's not so much like a one storm drains down there, where it's like stand water.
No, no, the, the intent is, yeah, cause the, the other uh nice part about the site is that so, soils are relatively sandy. So, yeah, if, if, any, any water that runs off will infiltrate into the ground and, and stay dry, just like it is today. And, and we're not direct, we're not hooking it directly to the wetland, that's just an overflow. So we're, we're trying not to impact the wetland at all. And to further, it, it's something that we came up with the design, it's not necessarily required, it wasn't required of us. But it's just a part of uh the overall drainage design for the site, okay?
Does that culvert have a part of like any Eagle um permissioning because it's draining into a wetland or, or not, just out of curiosity? Not in that case, okay, thanks.
The two pond outlets that discharge directly into the, into the uh wetlands, those are part of the Eagle, uh, part of our Eagle permit request. Um, because they are discharging the stormwater, um. Well, when the water comes in, it'll go out eventually, so, yeah, those are part of the Eagle.
Chris Radford, seventy-eight twenty-two Silver Hills, um, part of the, the houses of, north of there too. Uh, for that, so just to make sure I understand, there's no proposed, um. Uh, moving soil to s- seriously change the topography of that land as it currently exists. Cause I was surprised the, down below there on the golf course, how, how, how much they raised that road way up in the air so people could get walkouts. So I didn't know whether the, the builder at the person's uh discretion, they could like, oh, I'm gonna raise my house way up in the air and I'm gonna have a big walkout and. You know, things like that, so you would see different. Where I picture the houses sitting based on the topography, it could be the house number two or house number four. There's no dotted line close to the back, that could be, that house, if the person chose to, could be pretty far back there. So I, I, you know, just in, in terms of other places you build, sometimes they have restrictions on where houses are. If house five gets built first, then four is probably not gonna go way back there, cause it'll be looking in the back of house five or whatever, but. I don't know if there's any allowing each individual owner a discretion to kinda do whatever. I, I'm wondering, that would impact us that live north of that pretty significantly if there's no rules around that, does that, does that make sense? So I, and again, I don't know if all the restrictions and amendments and stuff for this community have been written yet or not. Uh, whether they will have right as a private community to rewrite some of those things themselves. Just, you know, concerned for those of us that are north and. We're probably seventy-eight twenty-two or least impacted by these, cause we're the furthest away from that property, but. Concerned about my neighbors and, you know, what's gonna be, what's gonna be in there. Somebody gonna be right next to their house and I can spit out my window to their window or something.
So, r- really the same comments apply, there, there'll be easements on, on. You can see the, the dotted line around those, those drainage areas, so it's, they're not gonna be any closer, they can't build into that easement, so. Uh, unit four is really the only one that has a, a minimum s- uh rear yard setback there that you see, one through three. Those, that's a, uh, that's a drainage easement, just to ca- just to cover the surface drainage, so. That, that's further than the setback, um, but no, we're, we're not, we're, we have not in, implied any. Uh, additional setbacks along that line, I think, uh, from a maybe, I don't wanna call it common sense, but from a practical standpoint. You know, tho- both of those developments have their driveway or their roadway right on the, you know, just north of the. Of the, our north property line, so I don't think anyone's gonna want to build too close to that, that's. At least be my impression, that they'd wanna stay away from that far enough so that they're not watching cars and headlights and things like that too, so. Uh, but no, we, we haven't at this point restricted any further, um, than the minimum setback or the drainage easement line that's identified. And uh, so at this point, someone could choose to build anywhere within that envelope.
Would, I'll, I'll just say, as part of the site condo, different than a P U D, it can't be any less restrictive than the underlying ordinances for the township. I mean, they could potentially make it more restrictive, but they can't make it less restrictive, so just because it's a. Site condo, that doesn't mean that they can say you can build up to the property line, the, the underlying district regulations and, and requirements still apply for me.
Uh, I'm sorry, he asked two questions, I'll try and answer the, the mass grading part of it. So this is the grading plan, um. The, uh, the heavy contours, the heavier darker contours are those areas that would degrade, would change. Um, again, twenty-three through eighteen are the, is the area that we're mass grading, uh, one through. Ten, you know, everything along there, we're more or less just grading the roadway in and leaving the existing contours the way they are. Um, and really seventeen through, you know, all the way around till you get, the, the rest of them were trying to just grade the road in. And, and not mass grade the site, because that's part of the character we're trying to preserve is the topography, so.
Anyone else?
I just, one other question, trying to understand the plans. Um, how does one go about deciding like landscaping and design? A- and selfishly, I ask for like lots one through five, let's say. Um, yep, we do have a road that runs right along that property line there, but is there in the plans that you've had as a designing architectural person? Um, plans for berms at all, to have some additional, I don't know, landscaping to kinda buffer that a little, or I don't know if you had done that on the south side either?
Um, the, the answer is no, uh, the, the development itself will not, is not proposing any additional planted landscaping or screening. Uh, that would be up to the individual home builder and owner if they want to see some additional screening.
And due to the, the zoning designations of both, so the, to the north and this, there is no requirement in the zoning ordinance for berms or heavy landscaping screening or anything like that, that would be more of. Let's say, there was industrial, commercial going in, there would have to be landscaping in Birmingham, if, if there was a. High density, then that would come into play, but since it's a rural residential in R one, there's no requirement.
Anyone else? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. Ed, do you wanna give, uh, highlights of your memo?
Yeah, it's just, it matches the conditional rezoning, twenty-three lots, it's similar to what we've seen previously with conceptual plans, they added the walkway to. Uh, the park to the south, which we discussed about coordinating with Kent County Parks, so that way there's no, no issues with that walkway. Uh, it matches the requirements of R one, so. Zoning wise, it, it meets the ordinances and it's, I don't see anything standing out with this, we addressed the, the remaining parcel. With the deed restrictions, which was probably the biggest concern and. So, yeah, that's about all I had that would be from my memo.
Questions, comments?
I'd just say, you know, kinda go back to your standpoint, Terry, of the, the sidewalks, if that's something that we are able to. You know, put in as a requirement on, on one side, and I mean, to my, in my mind, it makes sense to have that on the. South side of the road, just, um, agreed and understand that it, it may or may not. Connect to anything on Young, but if nothing else, we do have that path that goes down to the park and so. To, for access for all of those lots or for kids riding bikes or whatever on one side, it's gonna be better than having that in the road, in my opinion.
Echoing that, since we only get to do this development once. Just looking from so and moving, if I were moving that development in ten years, I'd be like, gosh, why did they only put sidewalks on one side of the street? We want a nice loop. Cause if we're gonna do it once, why wouldn't we wanna make it, and we're gonna have all types of different people in there, no one ever would be like, gosh, I wish I didn't have a sidewalk, right?
Until it comes time to shovel.
Until it's time to shovel, yeah.
Sometimes I have seen that there are times where people don't want sidewalks because then it becomes a maintenance issue for the H O A. So it's another, so I understand sidewalks on the south side, but if you start requiring them on throughout the whole, on both sides. Sometimes H O As, it becomes a maintenance issue, where I live, it's a maintenance issue and it is always a debate, so just something to consider that. If you want sidewalks and around all of it, that it is gonna have to be maintained and by the H O A and the people moving in.
So we were just discussing the whole sidewalk thing. Is the sidewalk or the pathway to go into the proposed, the proposed pathway, pathway to go into the park, is that strictly for the residents of that stretch of property? So then I'm I'm in my mind thinking, okay, if I lived in that neighborhood and I was living there, bought into it, like, might I frown upon having a lot of other foot traffic coming through? I mean, how does that work? Is that, does this consider private property and they get to say, sorry, Tillicum, you don't get to hoof it through here, you gotta go somewhere?
Technically, yeah.
Okay. I just, I just want to kind of, and I get that, I respect that, that's their space and that's how they want to handle it. But I just kind of from a, how do we be courteous and and not be offending our neighbors as we schlep through their property? So I just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Anything else you guys want to add? Questions, comments, concerns, others? We need to come to some sort of conclusion here.
I I would like to hear from Excel just on your thoughts about a sidewalk and.
Well, I I can tell you the applicant, you know, there's a reason they did not propose it. They don't, they don't think it's necessary and aren't looking to incur the the cost of constructing the sidewalk and and that cost that's imposed on each each lot. If there is a sidewalk, you know, that I know it's up to, it's ultimately up to you guys to to require it on one side. We've done that before. It's not unusual. It it becomes, you know, so that one person has to pay for it, the other person. So there there's an economic, maybe a lot pricing thing that has to happen to to make that equitable. And yeah, I I think the the point that it's a side, you know, it's a sidewalk to nowhere from the standpoint of Young. Yes, people can walk on it. Yeah, I I I walk, I walk a lot at my house. And it's, we walk on a thirty-foot wide public road. There's no sidewalks. Yes, you have to be careful, but this is also a cul-de-sac with with minimal traffic. And it's your neighbors that are driving through there. So it's it's one thing for me to be walking on a thirty-foot wide public road when the people that are driving through aren't necessarily your neighbor and don't, aren't always courteous on how fast they go. So is is it necessary in this case? I I don't believe that it is and neither does the applicant. But it's not ultimately our decision, it sounds like. I would ask the question, but I I don't know what was imposed on the PUD to the south. Those are a lot smaller lots. Obviously, the cost to install a sidewalk per lot is considerably less. I don't I don't know what was required there. I I didn't think there were any other sidewalks in that whole development to the south, but I could be wrong. And I don't know what was required in
Good, Terry.
On the issue of sidewalk, where I used to live, we did not have sidewalks. And safety is one thing, but when you get into the winter with no sidewalk, you got one place to walk, that's the street of Fur Walker. And you push out, not only is that a safety problem, but when you think, we live in Michigan, you know, the swash and all of my crap gets, you're trying to walk and somebody goes by, you get blasted by all this crap. It's not just safety, you know, riding your bike up and down. It's safety walking in the winter, you know, it's also avoiding getting splashed and all this other mess if you are a walker.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would. I'll throw this out there, like I I'll be honest, if if I'm going to make a motion or anything, I'm going to require a sidewalk on the south side just because we can. And it fits with our master plan of walkability and just community aspect in any development that we do. And the fact that this has potential to connect to Kent County, like it's a no-brainer, even if it's just for the people in the, in this development, it's a no-brainer. It doesn't need to be on both sides, but definitely I would say that south sided would be something that I would, if I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to, I would make sure that it's in that that motion. Do you guys have any other comments?
I can't find it now, but something about sewer hookup for lot twenty-two or twenty-three, an option. I can't remember my question was, does anyone know what I'm talking about?
I think they're all required, aren't they? I don't think they have an option.
All right. Oh, yep, I just misread it. Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions, comments, concerns? I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, recommend to the board approval of the site plan with the conditions requiring that the applicant add a sidewalk to the entire length of the south side of the road and that they meet all the requirements of the planner, the attorney and the engineer's comments. And that the trail needs to reach the Kent County Parks access approval point. That is my motion.
One friendly amendment to that is we need to call out, or do we also need to call out the deed restriction to the front lot as part of that motion?
I will edit my motion to add the deed restriction to the front parent lot. Farm, we'll call it the farmhouse parcel. We've got a motion. Is there any support?
I I just have a question. Not a builder or developer, I I feel a little constrained to tell the developer where his sidewalk should be. It makes sense to be on the south side because of the connection to the park. But I don't know if there's another reason where it should be located on the north, given lot sizes. So I, if there's, if our goal here is to have a sidewalk, are we meeting the goals of the township by just having a sidewalk?
Are you are you saying then, it would just need to be a a sidewalk on at least one side of the road that connects to the the trail?
Yes.
We'll amend the motion then to say that.
Is there a reason why you guys only want it on one side? Is it just to incur less cost for developer? I'm just thinking, we're always talking about we can only develop things once. I know it's, I don't know what it costs to do a sidewalk. I just, is one side really sufficient for a neighborhood like this that can't really get to Young? Not trying to make it harder for you. I just want to make sure we do it right.
I would be persuaded if it were a public road that maybe we would take it a step further, but it's a private road. And so the 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 number of residents on the road, I think, is reduced. So I feel like requiring one, at least one side meets potentially the needs of the smaller community.
Just a thought. So I I live early as well. We do not have sidewalks. When I look at lots ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, if I lived there, if I lived on some larger acreage, I don't think I'd probably want to maintain a sidewalk. So today I don't maintain one. I enjoy not maintaining one. So I I see the desire to have that connection, walking to the to the park. But I think it can be restrictive on those country kind of rural properties to put in a sidewalk.
I agree, but we switched it from rural to a different zoning.
Yes.
So if it was rural, then I would.
The sidewalks would still would technically be a common element, so then the bylaws would have to reflect that they would have to be maintained by the association or property owners, however it would have to be, so the bylaws would have to be revised to address the addition of a sidewalk, just how they address the maintenance of the road. So the HOA will be responsible for the plowing or salting of those. Unless somehow, I'm not sure if it'd be written that individual property owners are, so I'm not sure how it could be written in the bylaws, but it has to be addressed by the maintenance and who takes care of them.
So we have a motion and I'm happy to amend it and I'll reread it. That we have a recommendation of the board for approval of the site plan with the conditions requiring the applicant to add a sidewalk for the entire length of the road, meet all the requirements of the planner, the attorney and the engineer's comments, and a trail needs to reach the Kent County Parks access approval point and a deed restriction on the farm parcel, the remaining lot, not to be split.
Do we need to specify that the trail should connect to the sidewalk?
We can.
It's your motion.
Splitting hairs now, but yeah, we can amend the clause that says a sidewalk entire length of the road and connect to the trail going to Kent County. So you have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion. We have support. Ed, you want to do a roll call?
Support?
Yes.
Masterson?
Yes.
Twyman?
Yes.
Guttus Slayden?
Yes.
Prentow?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Good luck at the board.
Thank you.
That's all we had on the agenda. Is there any planning commission comments? Ed, you want to address the email that you got?
Lori Haney has resigned from the planning commission, so we will be one down one, so I'll get with Jeff and Ben about good steps going forward. So.
Do you have any comments from the board?
No, it was a good meeting last night.
Did they vote?
For what?
On the what's this called?
Vote on Eastbrook. It's pushed out. We almost approved the budget.
Almost?
Yeah, there was a couple of questions. We postponed it for a couple of things for that.
Shut down.
Jeez, what else did we cover? My mind's going blank.
As you're as you're pulling that up, what was the for the for the property over here? I looked, it sounded like there was public comment, but no other action was taken as at this point, not going back to the planning commission or where do we sit there?
The site plan. That was a really fun meeting.
What properties is?
For Eastbrook. So our recommendation to the board was that they not approve it. The board originally voted to follow our recommendation. The next day, Henry changed his mind. So at our next meeting, since the minutes weren't posted, he were able to change it. So then at our next board meeting, he changed his vote. And we talked about a lot of things. He says his reason for changing the vote was to get twenty-four units on sewer. That felt very important to him. And before that, they would only have, I think, two or three hooked up to sewer by our rules. So then we had a really nice, open discussion. I want to say it's two weeks ago now. Lot of things were brought. It was a really good discussion. I wish we would have had that initially. But the crazy part was Eastbrook had a lot of things that we as a planning commission originally said we would like to have, like they're talking about having a trail way. And Jeff, you were there. What else? It was just a really good community. It was the most respectful community discussion I feel like we've ever had in Kana Dunga that I've been a part of. It was, it was really fun to see.
It was a good open house style feeling. All the things that we addressed to the applicant at the time, they touched on. And are willing to negotiate on all of those things. But it really comes down to, it was a conditional rezone. The board has, do they want to do it? And if they do come to an agreement or the board does, they decided they want to approve it. I know part of the condition is, is that they will kick it back to us for the site plan approval portion of it. Which would happen just like this one is right now, but I think they're just negotiating right now on a second access point on the south end of the property maybe and.
Also the document that we had at our planning commission meeting, I want to say November, something that document got brought and shared with all the board members too. We just want to make sure.
They're going to review the sewer, I think, too. That was one of the big things.
Just making sure that we have the capacity because obviously everyone wants everything on sewer, like that would be ideal, perfect situation. We know the problems that come with septic. It's just making sure that we can come with a nice balanced approach that is feasible for the developer and for taxpayers as well, for our long-term health.
The September study showed current capacity at like eighty-five percent to a hundred percent. That's a big difference. So are we closer to a hundred or we closer to eighty-five? So we asked the engineer to clarify this area because the future, if they do add that showed red all in front of bricks. So that's a problem. So I wanted to know, and I had requested basically that, well, Steve requested that he get back to us and tell us like, are we ninety-five? Are we ninety-eight? Are we hundred? Are we eighty? So we need a little more clarification.
So if they've been questioned that statement, I mean, it sounds like what the board saw in this considering was, I'll say, marginally or maybe drastically different than what we discussed here. It was before us, which is good to hear. And then the question is, when, when does this back to the board or is it just essentially tabled as outstanding business right now with the decision to be determined of what to do with that?
I think we're waiting on the sewer study.
Okay, so TB.
Yep.
Okay. Excellent.
Does that sound right to you, Ed, though?
Essentially, it's going to stay at the board though, right? We will not get it back unless they
Because it's a rezonance, no matter what, it has to come back for the site plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Do we have a meeting next month?
Yes, we do.
Any other comments?
Uh, I, once again, I just wanted to say thank you for the flowers for my mom's funeral. I was shocked to see them, so I appreciate it. And my family did too, so.
We appreciate all you do for us.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.